I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, October 10, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. And duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Prayer will be offered by Legislative Manager, Donna Graham, and Alderman Sullivan will lead us in the pledge to the flag, please.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Our pledge is to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Gouvea.
He is on Zoom in the waiting room, he said.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
I'm here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Kelly.
I'm here.
President Wiltshire.
Here.
You have 14 in attendance.
Thank you very much.
Possible non-public session, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to propose a motion that the Board of Alderman go into non-public session by roll call pursuant to RSA 91- A, semi-colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, parenthesis, E, consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation which has been threatened in writing or filed by or against the public body or any substantive division thereof, thereof, or against any member of thereof because of his or her membership in such a public body until the claim or litigation has been fully adjudicated or otherwise settled. Any application filed for tax abatement pursuant to law with any body or board shall not constitute a threat or filed litigation against any public body for the purpose of this paragraph.
Could I get a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Alderman Moran.
Alderman Moran.
Okay, thank you. Roll call? Roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
President Wiltshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, zero nays.
And that motion carries, and we will go into non-public session as soon as the doors are closed. Public session at 8:06 PM. And we're going to move forward on our agenda, communications. One second. Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. Communication has been received from President Lori Wiltshire regarding calling a special Board of Alderman meeting on October 10, 2024. Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director, regarding communication to further explain Resolution R 24089 and seeking special Board of Alderman meeting.
There being no objection, I will accept communications and place them on file. Public comment. We have four speakers who have signed up. First one is Laura Cahoon.
Laura Cahoon from Third and Greenwood Drive.
One moment, please.
No, we don't need to. We're good. We're good. Thank you.
My apologies. Go ahead.
Mayor Donches, you should be ashamed of yourself. First, you try to blame the school district for the Stellows. However, it's your responsibility to make sure the repairs are done within all of Nashua, not just downtown. From 2021 to 2024, Nashua collected approximately $1.4 million in garage and parking fees, and the city spent $72,000 in the same period on repairs, with the $23,000 unspent budget, which went on other things. Somebody needs to be held accountable for their situation. It's unfair to take it out on the children. The fact that we have so many things that are brought to this board that need immediate reaction or, you know, immediate action because people have not done their job correctly is not right. We got taken on the Performing Arts Center. Mayor Donches, you just pull figures out of the air, and you have no idea what the cost would actually be. I suggest that you get a contractor in to determine what is wrong with each garage and how much it will cost the taxpayers to fix. Taxpayers do research before they have any work done on their homes. So far, as you promised to the police about the training facility, there will be a lot of children this year that want a lot of stuff for Christmas, but their parents will not be able to fulfill their promises. Please tell the police department to put it back on their wish list. You now hit the taxpayers with new assessments at the same time you wanted to increase the spending cap, and you will, and spend more money is unforgivable. I mean, we just don't have it. Did you forget that you also just gave Nashua taxpayers a 15% increase on their water waste bills? That was only done April 1st of 2024, and with the price of food, closing, clothing, and other utilities. You are showing that you have no compassion for what the taxpayers are currently going through. You state that all this additional money will not affect the 2025 budget, and you're right. The problem is, it's going to affect the 2026 and all of future budgets. How much more do you want from the taxpayers? Since 2017, our bonds or so-called mortgages have gone up by 33.53%. If you add these bonds to the list, that percentage will go up to 43.75%. Mayor Donches, you can't take blood from a stone, so stop spending our tax dollars. Mayor Donches, you stated that you have the money for Stellows. We'll fix it now and let everything else wait till next year's budget. I'm asking the Board of Alderman to say no to R 24089. Do not kick the Nashua taxpayers while they're already down. Thank you. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I come here to speak in opposition to this resolution. You know, the whole way this was done is just really concerning to me. It lacked transparency. There is so much hyperbole, misinformation, and omissions being done in this city to express why these things are needed. We had our debt committee, and the imperative need of these garages were presented on Tuesday night as, you know, a danger and a safety issue. How did this come to be? All of a sudden, we have a Stellows issue, and now the garages are crumbling and falling down. I was there when we listened to reports about, you know, cracks in concrete, chunks coming off, but not, you know, something that was a major structural issue. And certainly, I am not a proponent of waiting for a major structural issue, but it just wasn't presented that way, and we have to pick things. You know, I look at the spending on Riverwalk, and I think a $21 million bond, I don't agree with the numbers she put up last night, there was no just, Tuesday night, there was no justification for the 17 million. Nobody asked for the backup. They're already spending contingency money on that project. I don't really know why, because that wasn't explained, but when I do the math, it's much higher than 17 million, but nobody asked. I had to file a write-to note for that today. And I would prefer that the board start looking at the backup and the data used to create these numbers, because I think you're going to have a lot of overspending there. We have so many needs, and I understand we have to pick and choose, but the reason you put that bond debt committee together was to control spending in bonding, and now you're just blowing past it because all of a sudden you need to. And really, you don't really need to sell the bonds till next year, so your argument is, we really won't be selling them till a year later. Then why are we doing it at all? Just wait till next year. There is so much stress in the community over all of the, everything going on in the world, and the cost of living, and their personal home costs. These new assessments blew their minds.
One minute.
And even though you say we don't know what they're going to do for taxes, it's because we never got the proper information from Vision or the city, the assessing office, on the information packets on which the climb was. You pitched, Mr. Mayor, in the meeting, that the gap had closed between commercial and residential problems, properties. I believe, looking at the math, the gap has opened from 10% to 12%. Now, that's just using the data, but there's no data that you provided us. There's no data that the assessing office provided us. I use the data off the spreadsheets, and I know people will say, well, she's a liar, but you gave us nothing. I worked with what you had, and the gap between residential and commercials has widened from 10 to 12%. So, residentials are carrying an even heavier burden, and people have a right to feel stressed. So, I'm asking you, I don't think this was done right in committee, and Ms. Wiltshire, with all respect, I feel like not referring it back to committee and saying it's because only five people were there was a lame excuse.
Your time is up.
Lame. Thank you.
I've got my own clock here, darling, so. Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place, Nashua. I am against R 24089 for a lot of reasons. To come up with a request for $33 million about 48 hours ago, actually, you're asking for 45, so the bottom line here is 3288887. So, to have an extra 12 mil to spend, no. First of all, that does not flush. No budget would ever allow that. But one word can get a lot of this stuff right off of here. Prioritization. You know, you're talking about Greeley Park bathrooms, 1.3 million. Yeah, you know what? For 79 cents, you can make a sign, 11 by 17, that says, "Closed." Please use our new facilities across the street. They're beautiful. I didn't even know they were there. You can keep it closed for as long as you want. People are still going to take pictures, thinking it's a beautiful building with their weddings and everything else, and then you can put it in the budget down the road. Let's prioritize the parking garages. I didn't hear anything, Mr. Mayor, when you were talking about that there is crumbling here, or these, you know, holding this up, or mesh here. I did not hear one iota of, we hired Hayner Swenson or a study from anybody who is an expert in parking garages to say, okay, you have three parking garages in town, here's the priority of what needs to be fixed when, and let's start and get it done. Not what, you know, the 1.3 million dollars or 15 million, I'm sorry, that's, again, nuts. Prioritization. Good planning. Anybody who has ever run a business, that's what you do, and you can't get everything you want every single time. The gentleman that spoke, what's his name?
David Scolera.
David Scolera, who spoke about Stellows, man, that guy's right on the money.
One minute.
He said there should have been a contract, a maintenance contract. True, would have saved a lot. And you know what? If BG is paying $15,000 a year to use the field, that's probably about enough tuition for one person that goes there, one kid. Anybody who's using it from outside of Nashua, let's get the money from them, because otherwise they can, they should be building their own facilities. I mean, think about it. These are just good business decisions and choices, and if you have to accept a grant and because something else is in here, then write other legislation to get that grant. Just reword it, but all this stuff should not be in here, should not be passed, and my taxes are way high enough. I just want to give a shout out to the Department of Public Works. They came into my neighborhood today and had cleaned up from contractors who had left a lot of crap in the street and in our neighborhood, and they did a phenomenal job. And I have to tell you, I know I've got one second, I have to tell you that they are the example for this whole city to follow. They answer, if only I knew how to shout, okay. They answer emails courteously, in a timely manner, and actually, they don't always email, they'll even call you and have a discussion, and they're very respectful.
Your time is up, Miss Bill.
I understand. I just want to give a shout out to Lisa and Lauren, and they do a great job. So, the example.
My name is Fred Thibodeau, 24 Cheyenne Drive. Well, here we are again. Gentlemen, ladies, you have a communication, you may have a communications problem on Stella Stadium and the new assessments, but you really have a serious spending problem. The problem is not the new assessments. The problem is your spending. That's what makes taxes go up. There is no real priority setting in your spending that I can find. You don't need a tax cap, as the mayor is proposing. What you need is control your spending. As a board, you're supposed to offer a check on the mayor's spending, but you act merely as a yes chorus. I handed out, did a handout two days ago that clearly showed the problem, clearly showed the problem. Now, the mayor mentions how the state made a mess out of the cap, and I totally disagree. And I have a handout for that, which I hope, through the minutes, you can pass that along. I hope you, you can pass that along to your side. I'll give you one chart so I can read them myself. You see, that is the state law that supposedly made a mess out of things. There's only one change on that chart made in 2021 that wasn't before 2021, and that established July 5, 2011, as a date and states that any tax cap or spending cap of any kind that predates July 2011 is fully enforceable. That date was put in there by me at the request of the Chair of the House Committee and later the Chair of the Senate Committee in the State House. It was there because Alderman, well, not Alderman Bolton, City Council Bolton argued successfully before the Supreme Court there was no date, and therefore, the grandfather clause could not be proven. Clearly, the spending cap is grandfathered. Everything that happened from 30 years ago onwards is valid. There would never is, was, and there should not be grants in the budget. There never was, and there should never be face values used for spending cap calculation of a bond, meaning if you had a $20 million bond, count as 20 million, when only an annual payment may be due of 1 million, that is madness.
Time is up.
So, the time is up, but your scheme, the mayor's scheme for trying to preload the budget through supplemental appropriations has backfired, and it's backfired, and that's why you have the situation of today for the spending cap.
Mr. Thibodeau, your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 24089, approving exemption for fiscal year 2025 from the charter's limitation on budget increases.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to recommend final passage.
Motion is for final passage. Director Cummings.
Thank you, Madam President. May I?
I was going to introduce Mr. Cummings and the subject in general, and then turn it over to Mr. Cummings, if that's okay with you.
That's perfectly fine.
May I approach and sit in Clerk Haley's seat?
Yes. Mayor Donches.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'm glad Mr. Thibodeau handed out this statutory language, because this shows you the problem that we're dealing with. Now, what it says, and this is the state statute, is that all, I'm going to leave out the word town, just so, you know, because we're not a town. All city charters, and the word is charters, which have been adopted, revised, et cetera, they're grandfathered. The charters are grandfathered, not ordinances, not customs, not ordinances that interpret charters, the charters. And if you look at, there are similar provisions near this in the state statutes, all use the same language, the charters, the charters, the charters. So, the problem we're dealing with is that the only language which has been grandfathered is in the charter, and all the charter says is expenditures are under the cap. Everything that Mr. Thibodeau has been talking about for all of these months and years, yeah, a lot of it makes sense from a common sense point of view. Why are grants? Why would they be considered? There used to be, there used to be ordinances which interpreted the charter and made it clear how we should proceed, but those ordinances were not grandfathered by the state legislature. All that were, all that were grandfathered was the charter language. Now, we told these legislators that what they're doing is, we, the delegation, told the legislators, this made no sense, and this is going to be a mess, and our delegation, 27 to nothing, on a bipartisan basis, opposed this grandfathering in the way they were doing it. But they went ahead and imposed it and forced it on the city anyway, and that's what we're dealing with, because all the charter, the charter says is expenditures are limited, are under, are under the cap. When the city writes a check, gets, accepts grant money and writes a check, that is an expenditure, and a lot of things are expenditures that shouldn't really be considered, but under the, under what was done, the charter was grandfathered, but nothing else. So, that's why we're in this mess, and that's why we need a tax cap to get out of this mess, get some, something that works for the citizens of Nashua. And I know that many of you, probably maybe all of you, on a bipartisan basis, wish to proceed with putting a tax cap on the ballot, and we are going, I've been talking to Attorney Bolton, and we'll be coming forward with a proposal in the near future to, that could be tinkered with and discussed, but we have something, we'll have something to start with, and then we can try to proceed, put something on the ballot which can improve the rather, rather difficult situation that we're in. So, thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. Now, I did, I was going to do a little bit more on this. All I can say is that there is, given the way we have to deal with the situation now, there is probably eight, around $4 million left under the charter, and the reason it changes every day, and the reason is because grants come in bigger than they were considered, some grants get turned down, and anticipated grants were, because they would include, they would be expenditures, we didn't want to be in a situation where we couldn't accept grants, so they were included in the spending cap calculation, anticipated grants. We were hoping to get a grant, for example, for $5 million for a so-called raise grant. We weren't awarded that, so that actually opened up $5 million of cap space. On the other hand, we've accepted a lot of grants since the budget passed, which have reduced, you know, the cap space numbers. We got a grant from Delta Dental for the in-school, you know, cavity program or the examination program, the tooth fairy, that's 360. We got a grant Invest New Hampshire for the Mohawk Tannery, that was 500,000. We got a Brownsfield grant for a million. We're now getting FTA grants for the buses of about 700 and, close to 750,000. These were not included in the cap calculation. Another thing that happens is, we assumed we could get $6 million for the lead grant. This is a competitive thing, which our Community Development Division applied for. Very difficult to get, although we have a very good record in expending these funds, and we could talk about the details of what they are, but maybe not now. But they've done such a good job with this, and I congratulate Matt right now. Not, not, they didn't get just 6 million, which is what they were thinking the maximum was. Yesterday, they were awarded seven and a half. So, that wasn't anticipated, so that reduces the cap space. So, we have some cap space, but we have a lot of projects that, and really failing buildings, for example, the parking garages. Well, these, we did, we did a priority exercise. This is like first priority among the, on the Capitol Committee, or it's, I think, projected to be done in the first year. Why? Because these garages are in bad shape. I really believe that the building code people, and we have had an expert look at the garages, and they, and it was a year ago, and there's a report, and they're not very good, particularly Elm Street. I'm not sure how long the building and code people will allow us to keep it open if nothing is done. It could shut, it could be shut down in the next year or two. City Hall HVAC system, now, this was not considered by the Capitol Committee because it's a smaller project, and the suggestion was that those should be done in cash, so they weren't prioritized, but that is a million, million and a half dollar project. The HVAC system could fail this winter. I mean, we don't, we can't say for sure, or, but it could, and it, or if not, it could, it could, it could fail next winter, and if that fails, City Hall is shut down till the winter is over. We're not, we cannot operate with employees, you know, without heat in the building. Another one is this Greeley House. Now, yeah, we could close the bathrooms, I mean, you know, we could, but the roof boards are rotting. This building is 113 years old, and it has heavy terracotta tiles on the top of it, and if, as the city engineer said to me, the stuff supporting this looks like it could buy it at Home Depot. I mean, it, this could fail. Now, I'm not saying necessarily it's going to be next month or even next year, but it doesn't have an indefinite life, and what if that, what if that roof collapses? So, then that building is shut down. This is a complicated job, because the tiles have to be sole sourced, you know, these are, this is not a common type construction or a common building. This is, this is a project that's going to take a while, and it's going to take some sophistication. There are other projects on the list. There's a $7 million bond issue for a fish ladder. Well, if, do you want a license? Do you want a license, relicence the mine falls down? If not, we don't need it, but if you want to continue to generate revenue out there, we need this. And there are other issues which you've, you've heard about, you know, the, the police training facility is, you know, I don't regard that as a luxury. I mean, we're trying to make sure that the police department is well-trained, they're having trouble filling their ranks. This helps them deal, learn how to deal with active shooter situations. That's what they use this for in part, how to protect themselves, particularly in an indoor situation when there's an active shooter, right? So, you know, it can be used the way it is, I think, but it's a lot better if they can make the planned improvements. So, yes, I have said that these projects could be bonded and would not impact this year's budget, but we have a lot, you'll hear, we have a lot of money on hand from, in the assigned fund, fund balance account. A lot of it could be paid for in cash. I mean, I personally, that, that's the way that I personally would approach it, but to do as much in cash as we possibly could. But, but if it's, it seems like some of the board members wanted to not add to this year's budget in a, in a, from a cash point of view, so, okay, we, some of these projects can be bonded. But again, I think everyone agrees that we got to go ahead with Stellows. That could still fit into, under this, the money that's in the cap, but it would be a cash expenditure. And I know, Madam President, I've gone on for a while, I didn't intend to go this long, but, I mean, I, I'm just trying to express to you the way we got here through this action of the legislature and what some of the this action of the legislature and what some of the issues we, that we're, that we're dealing with and hoping to improve the infrastructure of the city in a way that makes sense for Nashua's future. Anyway, I will turn it over to, um, Mr. Cummings.
Just one second. I would like to acknowledge that Alderman Gouvea joined us by Zoom at eight oh eight PM. Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Madam President, for the record. Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Service. And I'm here this evening to ask for your favorable support of R-24089. And I, I asked for this meeting after some conversations with members of the Board of Alderman, with, they had expressed a desire for, uh, some more details, a little deeper dive into the, into the legislation at hand. And so, um, I'm trying to, to provide that opportunity here this evening where we can, we can get some questions asked and answered. And so, Madam President, um, I, I want to keep my comments brief this evening. The mayor hit upon all the major points. I don't think I need to, uh, belabor anything as, as I know the, uh, evening is getting late. There is just a couple of points that I do want to make that I think are pertinent. One is relative to the fact that, um, if we were to take this action this evening, or take any action on R-2489, it does not mean that we will be adding to the operational budget in the sense that, uh, department budgets, uh, from a service delivery, operational standpoint would, would go up. What we would be proposing, using the monies for, uh, would be for one-time type costs or for SURF. And these, and these type of expenditures would not necessarily translate into operational increases in, in departments' budgets. And I think that's really important to make clear because I believe there is a concern or sentiment that if you exempted the debt service, um, by, by the approximate forty-five million dollars, that that would directly correlate into the budget going up. And that is, that is not necessarily the case. I do think it's important to point out the fact that everything that we've been talking about, um, follows, uh, hand in glove or in suit with prior financial plans that we have previously discussed and, uh, and is in line with some of the goals that, uh, this body and, and others have expressed sentiments in, in adhering to, uh, such as trying to maintain a unassigned fund balance of above ten percent and we're, we're, we're well in, in our way of achieving that at, at over eleven percent. Part of the issue at hand is, is how the cap calculation is, is currently, um, you know, the cap calculation and how we have to adhere to it. And as the mayor pointed out, grants, um, because at this point in time, there's so many discretionary grants and, and this is something newer in the environment that we're in now, it's something that we have to, uh, be cognizant of and, and realize that we may need to handle how we, uh, proceed with our budget planning differently than we had in the past because of this discretionary, uh, grant funding opportunities that are coming into us. And we are not having what was more traditional in terms of grant funding, which were entitlement or formula-based type, uh, grant funding opportunities, but we have these grant opportunities that are discretionary in the inflationary, in the Inflation Reduction Act that we recently passed at the federal level, or we recently plat, passed the, um, uh, the infrastructure bill. And we could be the beneficiaries of some of these unintended grants, uh, these, um, unintended, unintended, uh, unanticipated grant proceeds. And we, we do the best that we can during the budget planning process, but there are times when we may, uh, not, uh, we may receive something that we weren't necessarily planning on, such as the case earlier this year, uh, when we, we received an additional, uh, one million dollars in brownfield funds. Or as the mayor just alluded to, where we believed we were only gonna receive something like six million dollars in lead grant funding and it's more like, uh, over seven, seven million dollars. So, um, that is just a, an issue that we have been talking about over the last few weeks and I think everyone here is well aware of it. But here's a newer issue that I don't think people have thought about that I just want to take a moment and, and point out. And that is relative to, uh, an expenditure that we will potentially be making over the next year or two that will erode your cap space. And that is, we are gonna have an obligation to pay the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority for two point five million dollars on a, on a bond. And that is gonna be, the proceeds of that is gonna be generated directly from the property taxes itself on the, on the site. And we will erode some of our, uh, capacity, uh, from, from a, uh, cap calculation standpoint just paying for the, uh, for that, uh, that bond. So, um, whatever that dollar amount may be, whatever capacity we have, we're gonna have to set that aside. And that is an example of some of the nuances that we're gonna have to work through if we're just trying to move this city forward. And we're trying to move this city forward in an innovative way. Um, I've heard from speaking to some of, uh, the members here that they want to see the city move forward and they don't want it to be the way it was in the past. And to be able to do that, we need to have the ability to invest in our infrastructure. And so, as the communication lays out, we don't want to necessarily be in the same predicament that we've seen ourselves in years past with not having paving programs, um, where we, uh, don't have, uh, the ability to maintain some of the assets and the deferred capital maintenance gets so big that we have to actually buy new assets or new, or construct new buildings when it would have been, um, more fiscally, um, prudent to, to just invest in those assets over time. But because of the cap, uh, ceiling that we have to live within, we make strategic decisions to forego those investments to be able to just maintain our, our, our operational needs. And so, um, part of the, so part of the strategy had, strategy has been over the years is to use, um, surplus to pay for capital. And this is not new. We have done this over the years. It, it is something that we have done more recently with SURF as well. It's a, a, a good conservative approach because you're not raising, uh, property taxes to pay for one-time capital costs and you're using your surplus in a way that is beneficial to the property tax, uh, owner, uh, and payer overall. So, Madam President, what I was gonna do is quickly run through an Excel spreadsheet and talk about these projects ever so quickly because I think it is important for, for everyone to see what is listed out here and what we arrived at. I'm just sharing screen so folks who are participating remotely can see what it is that I have up on the, on the screen here. And so, um, uh, so, Madam President, uh, and, and through you to the, to the board, what you see here is a list of capital projects that, again, I endeavor to demonstrate that we, what we would be doing is using monies if you were to set aside, uh, the debt service in a way that would help advance, um, some of the capital projects that were discussed in the last six months or so, either through the budget season or more specifically through the ad hoc, uh, process that we had over the summer. During that time, I, uh, had mentioned on a few occasions that we had missed the budget season and if we wanted to stay on pace with, with, um, uh, the, the current plans, we would need to use surplus and the closeout process in the fall to be able to do that. And so, again, we're just adhering to what was previously just discussed by submitting to you all that this is how we would use the, the funds if, uh, this, this fall and into, into the winter. And so, with that being said, uh, part, what you see, um, colored here are projects that were absolutely part of the ad hoc process. And so you have the epoxy floors. This is something, uh, that the city has needed to do for a while. This is the, the cement area around the three swimming pools. We have delayed this over the years and it's been a top priority for, for the DPW. And it was on our ad hoc plan as something we should be looking to do sooner rather than later. Similarly with Greeley Park, as the mayor alluded to, this is one point three million dollars. Both of these, we're suggesting we use cash. Next, we have community development. And so, community development, as the mayor said, has a seven million dollar, um, uh, request for, for improving the, the hydro, uh, the hydro improvements for the dams. And, uh, particularly the fish passage is necessary to maintain the, the federal licensure. We need to start designing that project so we can stay on track and, and ultimately bond, if that's what the desire is, the additional monies. And so we need to start that process. So much of what we're talking about today has time delays to them. If we don't start, we need to, we need to take incremental approaches to maintain, maintain the, the timeline that we're projecting because we don't want to end up in a place where we don't have the, the, the project at a certain point when it's necessary. Because if the license expires, we won't be able to, to proceed. Commuter rail is a little bit newer of a project in the sense I wasn't part of the ad hoc committee per se, that's why I put it in a different color. But it has been widely known by this body as, uh, as, as a priority project and we have wanted to continue on with the work that we've done. And we knew that we have to authorize money to be able to continue on with task two of the commuter rail project. Similarly with the, um, capital match for, uh, transit, uh, we know that, that the transit system has some capital, uh, needs and this would, uh, again, be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that would go towards some various capital needs, uh, that the transit system has with as a match for. Again, all this is suggesting we use cash. The fire department has some, some significant deferred capital maintenance needs that they are working towards addressing. They've already identified two that they know that they're gonna need to take care of immediately. And this, again, falls right in line with this, uh, everything that we discussed during the ad hoc, uh, process where they're looking to make HVAC improvements at, at, at some fire stations and that is imminent. What is not so imminent in the sense that it's an emergency, but is something that has a long lead time if we're gonna stay on track with it. And that is the developing of a feasibility, uh, and concept drawings for the rebuilding of the Pine Hill Fire Station. And even if we were to do that three, four, five years from now through a bond, we need to start working on that now. And, uh, that is why that's, that's in here. Lastly, you have the police department that has some, uh, IT equipment, uh, needs at some smaller dollar amounts. Again, suggesting that this would all be cash that we would use. The schools endeavor to want to have a deferred capital maintenance plan, uh, similar to what the fire department is undergoing right now where they can have a prioritized list, uh, so they can, um, uh, come back to you all and, and talk sophisticated, in a sophisticated manner about the deferred capital maintenance that's necessary. Again, this is a one-time project where once this study is done, they would, they would be able to use it over a ten-year period to have a, a facilities plan on, and, and so there's, so there's this request as well, again, in a different color because it wasn't necessarily part of the ad hoc process, but it was something that was talked about, uh, over the last six months or so. Relative to admin services, you have the Hunt Building where five hundred thousand is being asked for. This was again brought up during the ad hoc process. This is actually for us to maintain a grant that we currently have. If we do not accept the, uh, move forward with this five hundred thousand dollars, we have, uh, a, a grant, um, currently received by the city that we can't act upon and we have a time limit in which we can use it. And the reality is, is if we don't, if we don't take this money and, and, and put it towards improving the Hunt Building, we'll have to give, uh, uh, you know, approximately uh, four, four hundred thousand dollars back to the, um, National Park Service that awarded us this, this grant. Uh, time clocks for Kronos across the city. So our time clocks in the city have come to its lights end. Again, I put it in a different color because it wasn't part of the ad hoc process per se, but this is time-sensitive. We do have to make these, this upgrade and this was identified more recently. And so I just want to make sure everyone i- is aware of that. Part of the ad hoc process, but as the mayor mentioned, it wasn't part of the debt service plan because it was only coming in at a million dollars. And, you know, there's, there's been some guidance provided by the finance, uh, team that we shouldn't look to bond projects at, at, at under, um, uh, under the, the, a certain dollar amounts. This is at, uh, a one million dollar request. So we had it on the capital list and where we suggested that you use cash to pay for it. This is time-sensitive in the sense that fifty percent of this building is used, uh, we use steam to heat the building. As I understand it, we are well beyond our useful life. I recently spoke to, um, Jay Honeywell to confirm what, uh, the mayor said earlier this evening and what I'm about to say right now, which is the parts are no longer available to maintain the steam, uh, system here in the building. If we, uh, lose parts and there's a strong chance that we could, um, we will not have heat in fifty percent of this building and there's a strong likelihood that we would have to close City Hall. And so, again, I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Then lastly, relative to the, the grant infrastructure, uh, general grants, transportation grants. When I originally developed this, I, I, I was under the impression that we needed this five hundred thousand. I learned today that this could actually be put off a little bit. So we don't necessarily need the Spru Street connector five hundred thousand, uh, for this year. It's something we'll need for, for later years, um, which is good because we have, we could redeploy that five hundred thousand dollars, um, uh, differently because there's, were a few other unanticipated, uh, projects that I'm about to, about to talk about. Heritage Rail Trail East was on the ad hoc plan. This is something that the community has expressed a desire in doing. We cannot move forward with this project unless we have a, a match. And so we, we do not have enough to match the money yet from the state. And this is an example where we're just trying to plan ahead to be able to have that money set aside so we could continue with the project if the community so desires to do that. But then we have Stelo Stadium, which originally I, I understood to be about a million dollars. It's actually more like one point five million dollars. So we could, we could absolutely, um, use that money, pay cash to improve Stelo's, Stelo's Stadium. Now, originally, we had talked about bonding the police training facility. And so, um, if you've looked at other plans and what we've worked through during the ad hoc process this summer, we had an idea that, uh, three point five million would be, would be bonded. Well, upon further conversations with members of the Board of Alderman here and speaking with the finance team, we have enough money that, uh, with, with additional surplus that if we so decided, we could use cash and pay for that and maintain the unassigned balance as we've previously discussed at above that ten, ten percent. So, uh, we, we moved it off of, as, again, just as a suggestion, to, off of the debt service plan done by the ad hoc committee, um, which I'm gonna just quickly sh- show you right here. As you can see, we had it right here as three point five million. We, we, that frees up some money over here. We had always targeted that we wanted to spend around twenty-five million in new authorization of, of debt service. So we would be increasing capacity in this plan if we do what, um, I'm suggesting and we absolutely can, can accommodate that with the surplus that we have. So that's why we moved it over and we're suggesting that we're paying cash. As previously discussed during the ad hoc process, we would be looking for fifteen million in, in, uh, debt service, which we cannot, um, move forward with this project unless we, uh, exempt the, the, the debt service as, as currently contemplated due to, due to the ceilings. And then we also have, uh, two point one million in landfill compactors that we need that, um, uh, again, because of the current cap constraints that we have right now, we cannot move forward with. And so that, that's something that we would need the capacity for. We have, over the years, used six, uh, used money during surplus to pay for various SURF items as I detailed out in the memo to you. We would be looking to follow the same practice again, add that six, uh, um, add six million dollars to SURF. What is a newer element that I'm not sure everyone around this, uh, body is aware of is, um, a few months back, and I'm not exactly sure of the timeframe, but I would say about six months or so ago, uh, one of our newer ladder fire trucks, um, experienced, um, I would say, uh, something very, very catastrophic. We lost that fire truck. We need that fire truck rebuilt. This was unanticipated. We just recently learned within the last two weeks or so, it's gonna be about eight hundred thousand dollars. And we need that sometime if we were to stay on track right now in that April, May, March, spring timeframe. And so that's this fiscal year. And so I've added that in here to also be, be contemplated. So, um, so I wanted to quickly go over these because I wanted to show everyone in detail how we have planned out using the surplus that we have. If we so chose, we would need a separate legislation to be able to take any of this action that I just talked about this evening. What R-2489 does is just provide us the vehicle or the ability to continue moving along with these, uh, various type of, type of projects. I would welcome an opportunity to have a discussion and, and, and answer any questions that, that may arise. And we could talk about how we could develop a plan that everyone is in agreement with. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, passing R-24089 at whatever level does not authorize Yeah, just, just for clarification, passing our 24089 at whatever level does not authorize the expenditure of any funds at this point. Every project would have to be voted on separately as a separate project. In fact, Stellows Stadium is coming up, which can't be done unless we have room under 89. So what we need to do is, is in our own minds, figure out which of these projects do we feel must be given the space if we decide to authorize it under this 089 cap? So whatever number we come up with for 089 doesn't mean we're spending that amount of money. Every single one of those projects will have to come back to this board for a vote. And then you, you know, if we don't do that, and we can only do this once a year. So if there's something that doesn't get covered under 89, it won't be done this year. And some of these that are bonds, the bonds will be, will be authorized if so voted by this board and work will continue, but the bond itself won't be sold and there won't be any debt service till another year. And also the thing with the bond plan is that we have bonds coming off of the bond plan every year. So you, you have some degree of space in the bond plan to keep the bond plan level. So just want to make that clear.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate the, the presentation given by Director Cummings. I appreciate what the mayor had to say in regards to the RSA because I, I agree with everything that, that he said because it, it, it does. We have to use the language in the charter. And back when former Alderman Teboom and I were on the board together, we had ordinances that guided the spending cap and those ordinances were invalidated by the state law. So, you know, I've always thought, I, I, I had, actually, I'm going to backtrack on that. I haven't always thought that the spending cap was bad for the city. In fact, when I ran for the first time for the Board of Aldermen, I ran on a pledge that I would respect the spending cap. However, once you get into serving, you realize and you see things and you, you realize how those things impact the community. And one of the things that I could not believe was that artificially, we could not accept windfall money. So through, yes, there was a, at the time, there was a, an ordinance that said grants were exempted. However, windfall money was not. And what I mean by that is back at the time, there were, we would get education grants from, from the state of New Hampshire. And there was a time when we couldn't, we, we could have exempted some money off of the, the bonded debt, but we didn't do that because we didn't have the will on this board to be able to do it. And what ended up happening was the school department overspent their budget. If we had appropriated that money, that wouldn't have happened. Now, it turns out that there was some other things going on in there. But the point is, is that the amount of money that they overspent that was pretty much equal or very close to what that school grant would have been. And so if we had appropriated to the Board of Education, we probably wouldn't have been in that situation. Fast forward a few years later on the Board of Aldermen, we get a, a windfall from Clock Tower for some, for a real estate transaction. We can't spend it. We can't do anything with it because we don't have, again, we don't have the votes on this board to be able to do anything. So all we could do is accept it and it goes into the general fund. This does nothing for the taxpayer. This type of, 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 it's foolishness in my, in my opinion because you're talking about money that has absolutely no impact on property taxes. None. And we're not able to, if we don't pass this exemption, we're not going to be able to accept grant money. Never mind the stuff that, that Director Cummings pointed out up here, which are all capital projects that need to get done. We're, we're going to run out of room in the spending cap to accept grant money, which is money that if we accept it, we don't have to spend property tax money. So if you want to increase people's property taxes, a great way to do it would be to not exempt this money and to vote no on the ordinance that's in front of, or the resolution that's in front of us. Let me put it to you another way. I also think that it's high time to repeal the spending cap and replace it with a tax cap. At the end of the day, what people in this city care about is not that we get out, that we get grant money. They want us to go out and get grant money. They don't care about windfalls that come down from the state of New Hampshire. That's good for them. What they care about is what the tax increase is going to be and how much money they're going to have to spend year over year. I support limiting that. I support a mechanism that limits that. In other words, the amount of money that this body raises in property taxes from year to year. That's what we should be putting a cap on. That's what we should be saying we're going to control the spending on, is, is, is that, not things outside of that. So the way I am approaching this and what, the way I would encourage my colleagues to look at this is we have an imperfect piece of our charter. And that piece of our charter has to be fixed. It can't be fixed though until the next municipal election. So in the meantime, we have to do something to get us out of this situation. The best thing we can do is support the, the resolution in front of us. We went through an exercise as a board, we had an ad hoc committee with the city staff and some Aldermen. We went through an exercise. We identified the different projects that were important for this city to do over the next five years and it passed unanimously. We all agreed, these are the things we want to do. Well, we can't do them unless we pass this. And I'm not suggesting that we take this lightly or that we continue to do this year after year after year. No, what I am suggesting is that we do this this year with the intent that we put before the voters a repeal and replace with the, with a tax cap. I think that's fair. I think it's the right way to go about it. I think it achieves all of our, all of the goals of all of us. We all want to see the city prosper. So that would be my suggestion. I am fully in support of a tax cap. I think this is something that we have to do in the meantime in order to get us through this year. And then hopefully we all advocate for that tax cap and it passes. We get rid of the spending cap once and for all. And for once, we can have a mechanism that actually accounts for how much money we tax our constituents and limit that instead of limit everything on the sun. So those are my comments and I, I hope you consider them. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. One of the things that I, I want to mention also is that some of the grants that we get, while they come into the city are oftentimes like kind of pass through. So they come to us and we write them off to, to somebody else. And, and the mayor mentioned one and that was the Tooth Fairy Grant. It, it came through public health and then it went out to the, the Tooth Fairy. And, and she does, she does the work within the school department and so on. So, you know, while it was, I think like a 200, her portion of it, because part of it went to the, did go, part of it did go to the Board of Health, but the other part of it went to, to her group and so on. So there are things that are, are like that. The city doesn't necessarily get all of the grant. Part of it goes to them, but it's still on our books. It's still, but it's not really our money. It just kind of was a pass through. And we recently just talked about another one that was a pass through. We had to approve it. We had to pass it on and so on, but it still counts against our spending cap. So these are things that are affecting us. So as, as my colleagues have both said, they're affecting our spending cap. It's not our spending, but it doesn't affect our taxpayers. So these are things we need to kind of really keep on. And there are times when we might have a, a large revenue that, for instance, within the parking department. You know, we're trying to get larger revenue so that we can have a robust parking department or that we can fix the garages and keep it within that. But we get the revenue and we can't use that money to fix the garages or we can't use that money to have the more robust staffing that we are trying to do so that we can have that parking department that we want because we have the spending cap. Yet we want to bolster up that department without affecting the taxpayers. With the spending cap, we could do that. So I mean, I think that's the way we have to go, but we need to first start with, let's take care of this and then immediately, and I say immediately, I think we really do need to start working on it because the next election, which this has got to go on that next one, is going to be here faster than we realize. So I don't think we should waste time. We should start working on it, but yes.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I know I've had a lot of eyes on me because of my vote at the Budget Committee. I had a couple of questions. I was wondering if anybody in the room, whether Director Cummings, C, CFO Griffin, Ms. Enright, do we have a vague ballpark picture of this fiscal year? How many of these unanticipated grants that we've accepted so far?
The unanticipated grants? How many we've accepted so far?
Yes. Yeah. I didn't mean to throw you for a curve, I'm sorry.
Good question. I believe we have received approximately one, two, three, three. We've approved three unanticipated and we have one pending actually before you right now.
In the dollar amount?
All, the total of that would be approximately 2.6 million.
I'm going to chew on that for a bit.
Although there was a million and a half yesterday in addition to that.
That's Stellows right there.
It was the, the transportation grant went from six to seven and a half.
Okay.
Or excuse me, the lead grant, the lead grant.
And I just want to clarify, what I gave you was already what you've approved or what's pending before you. And what the mayor's referencing is, will be legislation that you'll be needing to act upon in the future.
Which we wouldn't be able to without this.
So I'm going to say potentially yes. It depends on how, how other grants perform, but I, I would not feel comfortable saying that yes, absolutely. You know, you, you know, you should not take that action because again, yeah, there are going to be other unanticipated grants that could be coming in. Some, as an example, congressionally directed spending, which is again, a newer way that money is coming into the city that is going to be unanticipated and those are big dollar amounts. And so that is just a cautionary tale that you need to be aware of.
I'm good for now, thank you.
You're good for now? Okay. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. How much, how much room do we have under the cap right now? I don't, I understand we've accepted all the, the other day it was half a million, half a million. Now it's 5 million, but we've accepted grants and I'm trying to quickly do subtraction over here.
We, well, I would say, you know, it changes constantly.
Of course.
Sort of working on this whole thing today, I, I think it's around $4 million right now.
$4 million?
Yes.
Right now?
Right.
Okay. So one thing that I wanted to bring up, well, a question on grants. Because if we accept the grant, whether or not it's, if, if it's unanticipated, obviously it wasn't appropriated in the budget. So we accept it. We get $100, just using easy money. But there's stipulations with the grant, right? That we have to spend the grant on said project. Is there a certain amount of time? So if we go back to the, to the, the person that, that gave us the grant and said, here's a stipulation in the city, we won't be able to award this until July of '26. Can we still have the money? And they say sure, or they say no. But if they, but we take it and it sits in our general fund until we have room to appropriate the money to the, to the party. If we have room in the cap where we can appropriate, we can deliver. But are there time stipulations on these grants?
Yes, may I, Madam President?
Director Cummings.
Thank you. So just want to, before I answer the question, one clarifying point about with the mayor's comments. The, the potential capacity the mayor is referencing right now would also be dependent on legislative action. That's, that if, if legislation was approved and some transfers occurred, then there could be that potential capacity. And so I just want to kind of point that out as a, just a finer detail. And then to answer your, your specific question, Alderman Sullivan, we are constantly having those types of conversations. So as an example, I mentioned Spruce Street to you. At the time, we thought we were going to need it more faster, but we were able to work with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation and push that out a little bit. Then I mentioned earlier my comments about the Hunt Building. We can tell you right now that if we do not get that $500,000, we will lose approximately $400,000 because the National Park Service put a deadline to us and we have to meet that deadline. And if we don't meet that deadline, that money is, is, is not going to be available to us. And so it's on a case by case basis and we are staff constantly working with the various appropriate entities to try to make this work.
Have you looked at trust funds? For instance, as I was going through your project list, 500,000 allocated for the Fish Ladder. Well, according to the June statement on the trust fund, we have $312,000 in the Hydro Trust Fund. I mean, it's my understanding that if we, we've already appropriated that money. So if we use that money, that doesn't count. So, and in the city building fund, there's 875,000 in that fund. The HVAC is a million dollar problem. Can we use all sum towards that? So there are, there are buckets of money that we have and some are in, you know, pretty good chunks. And it was, and I was looking at the capital improvement campaign's report from May where the parking garage was a B priority. And Stellows actually made it in there and they alluded to the trust fund that said at the time, there was $200,000 in the Stell, it's called the Stellows Fund. It had 200, now it has 300 some odd thousand in there. So I'm wondering if we're looking at all of our options, all the, all the buckets of money that we have that we've already appropriated. And you mentioned the fire truck for $800,000, unfortunate, but we have 9 point something million already in the, in the SURF fund. I mean, wouldn't that come out of that trust fund anyway?
All right, let me see if I can answer some of this. So let's take these cases one at a time. Of course, we're not going to spend money we don't need to. Now, let's take the Fish Ladder. The $500,000 was a, was an allocation, but the idea there was that would begin the design, begin the design. The whole project is $7 million. So yeah, if the seven, if the $500,000 were available, sure, we'd only bond six and a half. I mean, we wouldn't bond seven if we didn't need it. I mean, we wouldn't bond seven if we didn't need it. The fire truck, no, the SURF, the money in SURF right now will purchase all of the expected, the expected acqui, equipment acquisitions that need to be made. You know, the police cars, the, the public work stuff, you know, all that stuff. An $800,000 unexpected fire truck is not in SURF. But we could just work through each of these things. But I would say, we're not going to, if we've got a, if we've got some money on hand, we're not going to, you know, spend, spend money twice. If we've got money, we would use it and we'll appropriate additional money only when necessary. But I think one thing that has not been made clear yet, I mean, in essence, you're deciding right now, are you ever going to do the garage? For example. Why do I say that? Because if you don't grant an exclusion now, the cap space that is available next year will be, say, 4%, 3 and 1/2, whatever it is, that will be needed to fund the operating budgets. That will be needed for the fire department, the police department, and the public schools and everything else. So if you do not do the exclusion now and you want to do the garage next year, if it lasts that long, you would have to vote an exclusion then. And if you don't vote one then, you'd need, you'd need, delay it another year, you got to vote an exclusion the following year. So the basic decision on these bigger projects, the smaller numbers can be, can be, and I see someone who's maybe questioning that. The, the basic city budget is, you know, say, 300 and, say, let's just make it easy, 300, 3, 3, 3 million, 300 million dollars. So were the cap 4%? That gives you the right to increase the budget by 12 million. But I can tell you, and that would be a 4% increase, I can guarantee you that we've got departments that you want to support that will come in at more than 4%. And we've got health insurance that's definitely coming in way more than 4%. So you're going to need all 12 million dollars to fund, the increase is requested, the contracts, everything else, by police, by fire, by schools, by insurance, by risk, everything. You're going to need all 12 billion dollars. So there won't be any cap space to do a garage. And you will then, you would then, then need to vote an exclusion if you wanted to do the garage. Because you'd already used up your 12 million dollars of space with the, with the, with the operating budget. So you're kind of faced with a question on the bigger, bigger things. And I'm looking at a couple of them, specifically the garage and the fish ladder. You're basically looking at, do you really want ever to do these projects or are we just deciding, hey, look, let's just let these things go? Forget, let's, let's, let's eventually just close the garage. Let's forget the licensing, you know, because we don't really want ever to vote for an exclusion. So let's forget those things and, you know, make the best of it.
Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to specifically address Alderman Sullivan's question where I can tell you all the directors, Director Sullivan, myself, Director Hanham, we're always looking to try to find ways to spend as little of the taxpayers' money as possible. So we look at the trust funds. We plan on the trust funds for their usage. So we think about that in, in creative ways and we try to, 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 those are the trust funds that we have juris, some sort of like jurisdiction over, if you will. So when you reference the, the building fund, I already know that the Hunt Building at 500,000 actually really needs another 500,000. If I was to go to the debt ponding plan over here, you'll see that actually the Hunt Building needs a million dollars actually to do the project. And, and I, and I know you don't all concern yourself with these details sometimes, so I don't expect you to kind of remember something like that. So we are trying to be as conservative as possible because I then further say, over here, we may not need it because I'm looking to, I'm already thinking, we'll take it from the, the building trust fund. And that will free up $500,000 on this plan where I know we already don't have enough money. You could also use the same example with Director Hanham today, who in a very creative way used the trust funds for the parking garages to try to do emergency repairs to keep the parking garage going, which is going to bring that trust fund down. And that's just to kind of keep things going until we actually make these decisions that we're talking about today. So anyway, so I, I kind of wanted to just bring that up because I think it's a really important point because I know whether it's Director Sullivan, Director Foto, myself, CFO Griffin, we are constantly looking to minimize the impact on the taxpayer.
Follow up?
Yes. Well, more of a comment, just, I ran some numbers and to the mayor's point. And I, and I think it's, I think it's important, and I want to clarify on this, is should this exemption go through, right now, our total fiscal year 2025, I'm going to throw a lot of numbers out, is 456 million. We take out of that 45 million, that brings that down to 411. We add back in 33. That's going to bring our grand total of total appropriations up to 489 million. Because even though we're exempting it, it's still there and it still counts to next year. And I use the figure of 5% because, I mean, last year was 5.4. So, I mean, inflation's going down. So that, that would put our total, would be able to spend about another $25 million next year, which I think just the bonding plan alone would eat up about 16 million of that 25, if I, if I have the numbers right. I mean, I don't want to relitigate the cap tonight. I don't. It's the rules of the game. I, I'm sure that some people don't like it, but we need boundaries. We have boundaries, we, if we have boundaries, we have to set priorities. That's the way it is. I don't want to relitigate it. Because it's going to be a problem next year, too. We have to deal with it. This isn't going to be on the, this isn't going to be on the ballot until this time next year, if we get it there. And if we go from a $456 million approved budget this year to a $513 million approved budget next year, that's a 12% lift. That's a 12% lift. So I guess you just have to ask yourself that question.
Of course, I'm, you know, we, the, the cap makes everything so confusing because within those numbers, I assume, are grants and, and bond authorization and all that stuff.
Total appropriations.
I mean, I'm talking about just the basic budget that is paid by the taxes, which is, you know, around 300, it's like 315 or whatever, but we use 300 as a round number. I, I mean, I think you're making the same point that, I believe, I don't know, that, you know, we're going to face, if we don't do something now, we're going to face the same issue next year.
Yeah.
Which, which is what I said, which I was saying before.
Wait, who have next? Alderman Jody was next.
Thank you. So I have a few questions. So Director Cummings, the, the, these capital projects not to be bonded, this list that you went over, and you say that that money is going to come from, from cash. So, so that, is that cash that we currently have in the unassigned surplus or is that the right terminology?
I won't get into, if I may, Madam President.
Director Cummings.
I won't say whether it's assigned or unassigned because CFO Griffin always has to correct me, but yes.
Well, forget the, the assigned or unassigned part, but it's money that we already have.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
And, and so, you know, the spending cap prohibits us, may prohibit us from spending that because we'd be over the cap. But the, the fact that we would, that we would spend it wouldn't affect the money that we need to raise from the taxpayers. Is that, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay.
Which is, if I may, Madam President, one of the ways you could argue is this is a more conservative approach. To your point, you're not raising it. You're using monies available that came in from other alternative revenues, fees and whatnot, to be able to do these capital projects.
Okay.
And may I supplement that, Alderman?
Certainly.
Yes, that, that's correct. And the two projects you would really have difficulty doing in cash are the garages, too much, and the, the fish ladder, two, two reasons. Too much, but it's also tied to a revenue producing facility. So the revenue generated by that dam can cover the, the annual cost of this debt service. The other stuff could be done by cash. And yes, we have, we have two buckets, I'm going to say, of cash. Number one, there's the unassigned fund balance, which is the minimum where we're supposed to hold. The ordinance says 10%. We've got like 11 and a half. It's like 30, 32 million, 33 million. CFO Griffin can correct that. But in addition, we were holding money in an assigned fund balance account and then more was added this year as a result of the surplus. There's, there's enough cash to cover the other projects. And since it's already in hand, it wouldn't, you know, the taxpayers would not have to pay for these projects any further. I mean, they would have to contribute no further tax money to pay for Stellows, the Stone House, the, there's some stuff at the landfill, the, the police thing and the City Hall. And I agree, that's, I mean, that's a more conservative approach because you're not borrowing money. You're just, you're using money that, you know, you get some money at the end of the year at your house and, you know, you need to fix the roof. You use cash. You don't, you know, you don't add to your mortgage. So that's what I would personally do. But I think it's important that we get these, these projects done. So however the board wants to deal with them, you know, it's fine with me. But I'm, just returning to the point, if you want to do, for example, the garages, I mean, you're, one way or the other, you're going to have to do an exemption to do this project ever. I mean, I think if you do the numbers, that's what you'll see. If you ever want to do this project, you're going to have to vote an exemption. So if that's the case and you want to do it, you might as well do it now. But if not, what, what if the garage fails? And it could. I mean, if you, you know, I think, I actually think Bill McKinney is holding off because, hopefully he's not listening, but because he thinks we're going to go ahead with improvements. So he's kind of giving us a pass. But if, if it becomes obvious, we're not doing, we're not making that, we're not improving that building? God, you know, I don't know what's going to happen over there. I, you know, it, it's not going to fall, the, he'll close it before it falls down. I can guarantee you that. And, you know, I don't know. I mean, you get the point.
If I could follow up on that. So, you know, you make a compelling argument for all of these projects, but they don't, none of them looks like a surprise to me. So why, why weren't they put into the budget?
Well, they all, they all, they were all considered by the, they were all considered by the, first of all, the, you know, the Capital Projects Committee because we were trying to prioritize them and they did a good job. They took, what, 300 million, reduced it to 1, 1, did you end up at 25 million a year or something? You know, down to 125. So they kind of ruled a lot of projects, just, we're not going to do those in the next five years. Number two, to put these in the, in the budget would have been, would have required that we go over the cap. So you would have needed an exclusion then.
So I have another question.
Alderman Jody.
So somebody asked me, they were under the impression that, that in, in these calculations, that somehow when we consider bonds, that we're including the face value of the bond as opposed to the, the annual debt service for that bond. Are we doing that and why, and why would we do that if we are?
We are. And that is one of the aspects of the grandfathering that the state legislature gave us. Now, I think, though I follow the guidance on that with, with, from Attorney Griffin and Mr. Bolton, so I think they could answer that better. But I think they regard that, you know, the word expenditure is a broad term and I think they regard the authorization of spending $30 million as, in essence, a $30 million But Mr. Griffin is here. I don't know if he's exactly chomping at the bit, but he's probably available.
Attorney Bolton?
We spend the money. If there's a $30 million bond authorization, those bonds get sold, we get $30 million. We spend it. It is an appropriation. It's an authority to spend. The language in the charter talks about all expenditures. It's, it's an expenditure. So you could think of it as buying a car, right? You borrow $20,000 from the bank, you throw in $5,000 that you've saved, and you go out and buy a $25,000 car, right? You use the $20,000 you got from the bank. You spend it. It was in your checking account for a half an hour perhaps, and you spend it. And then over the next five years, you repay it. And every time you write those checks, they will eventually add up to that $20,000 plus interest. So you've spent it twice and you had to be authorized. Now, would it have made sense to have different language in the charter provision about budget limitation? May well have made sense. But it's an expenditure. We're actually writing a check to the architect and the contractor and the mason and the plumber and the electrician. So it's an expenditure.
Okay. Can I, can I mention another thing on that, Madam President? Also, I mean, this is the way we've done it for, this is the third year now. So if we adopted, you know, the idea, oh, well, the, the principal amount of the bond isn't part of the cap, if we decided that today? Well, we've, we've done that for three years. That would open up cap space, but certainly we could accuse, be accused of changing the rules in a way that would allow us to do something that doesn't require an exclusion. I think, in other words, we say, oh, well, okay, the bond issue isn't under the cap and so we can pass the bond issue. But it's been under the cap for the last two years. So if we take it out now, I mean, we're changing the rules in the middle of the game.
Okay. I have some more.
Okay.
So the, you know, the spending cap provisions in the charter, you know, provide for, you know, not only this exemption of, you know, bond money, but also capital expenditures deemed And, and, and those are in 56D, which, you know, talks about doing this annually. Somebody said we can only do this once. But there, through you to Corporation Counsel, doesn't 56E say that the reserve fund may be used for unanticipated emergency expenses upon a 2/3 vote? And 56F says that if, if the actual and projected income from all sources fails to meet the actual and projected expenditures, that, you know, that there's an automatic across the board cut in all departments unless exempted by a 3/4 vote.
E and F violate state law. They're ineffective.
I'm sorry?
Sub 56E and 56F violate state law. We, we can't apply.
Okay. So I thought this provision that the legislature passed said that the charter, which would include these provisions, was ratified?
I don't read it that way.
Okay. So you're saying these, these other exceptions are not available to us?
The two exceptions in D are both available to us.
But not the two in E and F?
E and F are not, E and F are different things. One, one is if we, we go into a deficit. Well, we've never had that happen. And if you, if you do it right, it doesn't happen.
Right.
E, we can't, we can't do that kind of reserve fund.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I, I just wanted to, you know, just, just state, yes, I, I understand that we, we are under the spending cap and we have to deal with it. I'm under no illusion that, that that's not the case. And I, and I guess I was relitigating the, the cap to a degree because that's relevant, in my opinion, to the discussion that we're having in the sense that you have to give taxpayers assurance, at least I have to give taxpayers assurance, that what I'm doing here is a one-off. I wouldn't want to do this every single time, you know? I, I think it's, although if, if, if we don't change the spending cap, then we might have to do this more often. But I think, I think we can find a solution if we work together to come up with, with one. And I think that solution is replacing the spending cap with the, with a tax cap and doing this in the meantime. And, you know, and so that's how you have to, in my opinion, that's how I would approach somebody on the street who asks me, why did you, why did you vote for that? Well, I voted for that because we wouldn't be able to do the projects that were presented to us, the projects that we agreed were important. And, by the way, I hear you. I understand where you're coming from. And so in place of the spending cap, we're going to replace it with something better. And so, again, part of the spending cap is this exemption. It's a mechanism that's in there. It's what we're discussing. So again, I encourage my colleagues to, to do it.
Alderman DeW.
Yes. I think that everybody on the board has to calculate in their own mind which of these things we want to be able to cover to get done. And I'll give you a practical one. And there's a special meeting called, I believe it's the 22nd, if I'm on, but for Stella Stadium, $1.5 million. If we don't at least cover that in this 89 tonight, that meeting's off. And we won't be able to repair Stellus until maybe August of next year. No, we have to have this passed to be able to allocate that money for Stellus, even if it's cash.
We have 4 million in the cap.
Huh?
We have 4 million under the cap.
Well, if that's, that's, that's possible. Also, we have at least two, maybe three people that are, that want to give us funds towards repairing Stellus. We can't accept that money without having this passed tonight. So, you know, and somebody have to make a determination as to whether it is or isn't covered without 089 being passed. But I'm being told 089 has to pass for at least this amount of money, or it doesn't happen.
Next, I have Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Director Cummings, or the mayor. This is total 45 million and change exemption, which includes all the cash projects that we have available to spend and the two bonds. I'd like to make a motion to reduce the 45 to 27494 down from the amount of the two bonds and whatever that number comes out. So basically exclude the two bonding projects from this legislation. And that's my motion.
If, if I may, so that's essentially you're, you're suggesting 17.2 million?
Just of what the cash that we have on, on hand.
So, I, I'm sorry, so you want to exclude the cash?
No, I want to exclude the bonds.
So the bonds, the two bonds total 17.2?
To only spend what we have available for these projects that can be paid in cash.
Okay. So that, so to say it another way, not, not looking forward to, at this time, move forward with?
The Elm Street Garage and the, what was the other one?
Landfill compactor.
Correct, yeah.
May I, you know, make a point here? We can't spend the cash without an exclusion that covers it. So we can't do the cash projects without, without an exclusion that covers that amount. In other words, let's say we have 4 million under the cap. Okay, we could spend 4 million of cash without an exclusion. But above that, we, we need an exclusion, otherwise we can't spend it.
Well, I'm asking for, to be an exclusion for just the, the cash.
For the cash projects?
Yes.
And then we don't, you're saying we don't do the bonded projects?
Correct, that's exactly what my motion was.
We don't do them at all?
Correct.
Okay. At least it's
Okay, you've heard the motion, discussion. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I, I won't be supporting the motion. And I understand and I, and I appreciate the creativity. I appreciate people, I, I, I appreciate where it's coming from. I, I do. But I've been on the board too long to know that nickel and diming, this kind of stuff, never works. It just doesn't. Because what you're, what you're doing is you're kicking the can down the road. And we, living under the cap previously, we kicked the can down the road. And that's why we're in the situation that we're in now. Because we had to, we had to make decisions like whether or not we were going to fix a parking garage or, you know, different things like that all the time. And so, you know, it's, to me, it's not, to me, if you're against a bond, vote against the bond when it comes up. But we shouldn't limit ourselves from being able to even entertain the idea. Again, none of this stuff is going to pass unless a majority of the board, or in the case of a bond, 10 of us decide to do it. So, but we won't even have the opportunity to have the discussion unless we, unless we do this. And I think that's a disservice to every, every citizen in, in this city. Because I don't think that the majority of people in this city have a, they're worried about their tax rate. They're not worried about what we're spending in cash. They're worried about their taxes. And if we're spending a bunch of money in cash, that has nothing to do with, with taxes other than we've taxed them or collected a fee previously. But I, I, I don't know. I, I can't support this because, again, I feel like this type of, these types of actions are the reason we're in the situation we're in today.
Thank, thank you. So just, I want to quickly make a couple, a couple of points relative to the amendment that's at hand here first. I want to make sure it's clear for the record that I believe that the Building Inspector McKinney is going to act in the, in the best interest of, of the city and public safety. And I want that on the record, so I, I don't want anyone to be surprised. If he was to take some sort of action to close the garages down at some point, that will, that, I do believe that would occur. Similarly with City Hall here, I, I know he would not hesitate to put any, anyone's, that where he felt was a safety of some individual. And so I want, I want him, I'm not being as eloquent as I could be right now, but I want to kind of just make the point that that is, that is weighing deeply in the back of my mind, especially in light of what's going on with Stella Stadium. And, and I don't want anyone to, to say that they were surprised should something like that issue ever come up. And I only bring this up now because there's this discussion of potentially reducing the, the, the potential debt exemption amount. Secondly to that, I, I have, I've asked Director Marcello to join us because there's another element here that I want to make sure folks are aware of, which is relative to, this is a one-time-only action that we can take. And, and from an emergency management perspective, I believe she actually has some sentiments that I've asked that she share, Madam President, relative to this, that is going to be really important for this body to be aware of.
Certainly.
Thank you. First of all, apologies for not being able to be there in person. But thank you, Donna, for providing the Zoom link. So I'm Emily Marcello, Director of Emergency Management. When I was made aware of this issue, I said, oh, okay, well, if there's a disaster, we can just vote again and, and raise more funds. I was informed that, like, Director Cummings just said this is a one-time deal. So based on the proposal that was just made to reduce the amount, you know, I just have a lot of concerns. We don't, we prepare as much as we can for disasters, but I cannot predict when they're going to happen. And we've seen down south the amount of destruction that can be caused from flooding. About this time last year, we had a pretty catastrophic flood. It didn't do major infrastructure damage to the city infrastructure, but it did to over 200 homes across the city. So I just want the, keep in mind that should there be some sort of natural disaster, man-made disaster, and we have severe infrastructure damage, that adds up very, very quickly. And we would need to have room in, in the cap to make those repairs. Or as CFO Griffin told me, we, we'd just have to stop spending other money in order to do that. And the concern I have there is usually when we have a disaster of that magnitude, what we would be talking about spending those funds to then be reimbursed by FEMA. But again, it's an expenditure that we would have to make. So I just asked the group to consider leaving a buffer for emergencies. And by emergencies, I mean real, the real kind of emergency that we cannot predict or plan for, that we don't know is going to happen when it's happening, because it will happen. So when it's going to happen. And we need to leave that space to, to expend those funds to repair infrastructure that, you know, our citizens would be counting on. So I just appreciate the opportunity to make those comments and just ask that as you're voting on the, the figure, especially with this being a one-time deal, you keep, keep that in mind. It's, I'm not saying we're going to spend it, it's just having the ability to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Alderman Tebow. He hasn't spoken much tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yeah, I can't support this. You know, we're getting torched right now for Stellus and not acting quick enough on it. And whether it's our fault or somebody else's, we're still the city. So we now know the parking garages are going to need it, and they're going to be closed down. So can we, can we wait another year? Can we wait two years, three years? I mean, if something happened there and somebody got hurt, we would be destroyed. And, and it would, not only would, would, you know, we'd be liable, but there would be potential injury. And that's something we don't want. And that's, you know, that's another reason why Stellus got closed, because we didn't want, you know, they did not want a kid to get hurt on that field. And so, you know, we now know that the parking garages need it. We know what the expense is. We're not going to be able to spend it or, or bond for it without moving this along. So I just, I can't support that.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I too can't support it. But I, I do respect the, the maker of, of that motion for, for having done that. When you look at and you say, oh, a landfill compactor. I do remember when this, when this subject got brought up and so on. And it's not as just simple as a landfill compactor. There are, there are things that are behind, behind this. And it's the same thing with, you know, as we know, with the parking garage and, and so on. The bottom line is that these bonds are probably not even going to be sold. But we can't even move forward without having that buffer in there to be able to do the expenditures, to move forward with it, and so on. And whether we actually do that, but the bottom line is each one of these items is going to be coming forward. So we will be voting on each one. And if at that point, when you hear the discussion for the landfill compactor or the city HVAC and so on, at that point, you can say, no. No, this is too much. Or, no, we're not going to use this fund. We're going to use a trust fund for it, or we're going to do this, and so on. We have that opportunity to be able to use alternate monies or so on. So fine, yes, we say, okay, well then, then we, we shouldn't have been able to do this. But to not have that ability when this is the only time to be able to lift it up, I, I think it's, it's kind of being very reckless. It's the one time doing it. And I do get a little anxious when we know that we have these, this potential of actually closing down this garage or that we have this landfill compactor. We're sitting here making choices when we actually sat there during the ad hoc meeting and we listened, we had all of the directors come and talk to us about it. We made some hard decisions. We made decisions and said to Director Bagley, no, I'm sorry, you can't have that, what you wanted. We listened to all the directors make their pleas, and we made those hard cuts. Alderman from Ward 1, he, he actually made it, you know, made a, a motion to say, you know what? We're not going to do the 30,000 because that doesn't give us enough of a buffer. So we cut it down to $25,000 per year. I'm sorry, million or something. I'm too tired, I'm too tired. Cut it down to 25 million dollars. He was making some major cuts. So he cut it down to 25 million dollars. And we all agreed, that's right. That 30 million didn't give us enough of a, of a space because we didn't leave that emergency. He was 100% right to, to do that. Granted, that first year, we knew that we were over, overdoing it, which meant those next years, we had to kind of make it a little, little lean. But that's what we did. So we had that whole group. We had all of those departments come and talk to us. And I think for us to sit here in this one and just kind of make a slash, while I do appreciate what you're doing and, and, and trying to think about how can we kind of cut this, I, I just can't support it. We did a lot of work in that ad hoc meeting. We really did. And we met multiple times to, much to Director Cummings' anxiety. We met a lot of times, so, but I can't support it, so.
Madam President, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn. Alderman Lopez.
I probably would have opposed the last motion, but for the same reason that I'm going to support the, the motion before us. And I've said this a couple of years in the past, I think, we're aldermen that are elected to make decisions, not autopilot or use a stencil. And I think the spending cap, the intention was good. I think the general consensus is that it needs to be completely overhauled. But the idea was to make sure that we're not overly, you know, burdening taxpayers. That we all agree with. We, we need to make sure that we're not making Nashville a completely unlivable city. But we also recognize that managing a city that is, has been growing over the past several decades and is a high-performing, highly successful city does take constant vigilance and investment and reinvestment in its infrastructure. So we, we have to balance that. And the, the current form of the spending cap does force us to have these very necessary conversations multiple times a year because we do that through the budget process as well. And so I think it, it serves that role. But I think as aldermen, we do have to actually take these cases as they come. And as has been pointed out several times already, this is to allow us the space to make those decisions rather than to artificially deny us that based on very problematic legislation. So I think we, we should move forward. We should give us, ourselves the buffer. And I would also note that And I would also note that, I mean, I was pretty free with my opinions about the school board. I thought if they were going to, if they thought Stella's was so serious and they were aware of its damage, then they needed to put that in their budget budget, not send it to Joint Special a month after we did all of that work. I would be just the biggest jerk in the world to do the same thing with the parking garages when not only do we know full well that there's serious issues with them and they do need to be replaced sooner rather than later, we've heard about that for years. So that's one of the biggest ticket items on here. I certainly plan to support the Stella's because I can't criticize the school board if I don't quickly move on that and support people who are trying to figure out how to way to do that rapidly as well. And I think most of the projects on here are very worthy. They represent value to the city of Nashra and to the people, to the taxpayers. A lot of these are matches where we're doubling the money that people might be putting into stuff and getting twice as much infrastructure or renovation support that's much needed. So I don't see the mayor's personal yacht on here or any, like, particular frills. The biggest frill anyone can point to is the police training center.
That's not, that's hidden.
It's in the Star Chamber that I lost my key to. But I think these are important things that have been presented over the years and over this past year specifically. And I think as each one is presented to us as alderman, that's when we can tackle these issues and decide, "Okay, well, make your case. You know, tell us exactly who the contractor is going to be, what the timeframe is going to be, how we're going to do this." And that's the city's job. That's, Director Cummings will be up here doing all of that, I'm sure. But we don't leave ourselves the option as alderman to exercise our elected responsibility if we just say, "Nope, we have a percentage that we have to stick to," or "This is a stencil."
I have a list. I have Alderman Tebow next.
It may have been answered in a roundabout way, but one of the questions I keep getting asked is, or comments I keep getting, is, "I've already got hit with the taxes. Everything's costing more. If R-89 goes through, R-89 goes through, I can't afford that." Could you describe the impact in the year 2025, or this fiscal year, what the impact would be to the citizen if we do or do not pass R-89? Next year, sorry.
Attorney Bolton.
Yes. Resolution that you're now considering? No impact at all. None. This year, next year, any future year. This resolution has no impact. Now, if you pass a bond authorization to repair the parking garage, that will have impact over the next 20 or 30 years in paying that debt service. On the other hand, if you wait two years, it will have impact over 20 or 30 years from two years from now. The stuff that is going to be paid out of fund balance, that will have no impact, ever. But you can still turn that down or not. Whether or not, well, you can't pass it if you don't pass the resolution in front of you tonight, but you can still turn it down even if you pass the resolution before you tonight. The resolution before you increases a theoretical maximum, but you don't have to use up any of that space. You get to vote on all of it, and all of it takes 10 votes. So in many respects, you're just, again, just putting off, you're giving yourself the opportunity to make a decision later on. If you never pass this, you don't get the decision to vote yes on A, no on B, yes on C, et cetera.
Alderman. I'm waiting. Sorry. My comments have changed as the conversation's gone on. So I'm going to support this. I think that the way I understand this and the way that is best communicated is this allows us to access money we couldn't access because of the cap. It's not going to impact taxes. And what we are doing in this city because of the cap, and I know we don't want to talk about relitigating it, but this is what's happening, is we continue to have this dirty little term called deferred maintenance, where every single year, we have to look at these lists and decide, "Oh, in July, well, maybe it'll make it through this season." So we can't afford to do it, so we're just going to hold off and hope that it's going to make sense. And I think we owe it to our taxpayers to maintain the infrastructure that we're putting their money into. So I think it's imperative that we do this now as a one-time thing, but we need to look long-term at how do we handle capital projects and how are we maintaining the infrastructure that we're putting a lot of money into.
Alderman Gueye.
Thank you, Madam President. And as we talked a lot about, the ad hoc bonding committee and the time we spent there, which was long, hard meetings with a lot of very tough decisions at the end of the day, and all very warranted projects. And once again, I think we're looking at a list of all very warranted projects still. I don't think there's anything on here that, in a perfect world, I wouldn't support because this is all stuff we need to do for our city. But in the long run, in a perfect world, I wish we were aware of, "Well, you're going to have to exempt money when we were in that ad hoc." Would that have changed the strategy a little bit? Maybe, potentially. Even when we were told this information about exempting money from this. Part of me wishes we did reopen the ad hoc and had that conversation, and maybe we verified the same plan again, and we said, "Fine, let's just go for the exemption." Or maybe we amended it. It's hard to tell. But with the cash spending, I think that's fantastic. We should spend the cash before we go anywhere else. But when it comes to the exemption, I just find it hard to believe that we're going to ask to exempt a certain amount of money, and we're not spending all the way up to that amount that we asked to exempt. I just, I just find it hard to believe, sitting on this board, that that would be the case. Now, I totally agree with my colleague at large, who brought up the tax cap. I think that is the way to go. And I would probably more than likely support it when the fine details of it come out, because that gives a lot more flexibility and freedom. And you're right, at the end of the day, my constituents have never once talked to me about the volume of spending. It's about the tax rate. So when it comes to grants, funding and all of that, I'll in. I think that tax cap is the way to go. Now, is there a way we could get a tax cap done faster? I don't know. Could you? Could you call a special election with a charter change? Special elections are expensive, but we're talking big-money items here that could be changed. Is it worth it? I don't know. Conversation worth having? Not even sure the logistics behind it, but I've been in this chamber past 10:00 PM three days in a row now, so we're just kind of thinking out loud. So all things considered, this is a tough vote for me, and I won't be supporting it at the end of the day. And I think we need to take a long, hard look at the long-term plan of what we need to do here. And I do believe big fixes need to be made. And I think a tax cap is the way to go, and how we get that done and how quickly we get there, well, that should be all things we look at. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I heard many of you speak, and I heard many of you speak several times. And taken to account, so I would hope that everybody's mind is made up. And due to the, it's a little past 10:00 PM now. So therefore, I'll introduce a motion to move the motion.
Move the question?
Move the question, please.
Motion is to move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 2489.
Roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Gueye.
No.
Ald, whoops. Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
President Wiltshire.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, four opposed. That motion carries. Resolution 2489 is declared duly adopted. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to propose a motion that the October 10th, 2024, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned, and thank you all.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
We are adjourned at 10:06 PM. Thank you, everyone.